Almost.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am in Texas by the pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And as I say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. Do we have anything for citizens' comments? Going once, going twice? Sold. All right, citizens' comments are closed for the evening. All right, first thing up, be the council approval of the February 25th, 2020 city council meeting. So entertain a motion for approval on those minutes.
May I run a motion to approve the February 25th, 2020 city council meeting?
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that particular item? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, moving on to the second thing. Approval of the March 4th special city council meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the March 4th, 2020 minutes.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And for those of you that have been around for a long time and you've seen that we've had some pretty long meetings, that special meeting probably set the Guinness Book of Records of a short meeting. I think it was like three and a half, four minutes long. So, all right, we will move on to item 6.1, public hearing regarding a request by Mohammed Palani on behalf of MFS Group LLC requesting a zoning change from GB General Business to Plan Development District for General Business on a 1.5 acre tract in the King Latham survey Rockwall CAD property ID 10132, generally located south of FM 550 and State Highway 205. All right, Carl?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. This request, as you've seen before, we're mandating act of city planning commission to see if that commission first requests again, I'll give you their votes in the document. They recommend four to one for the staff recommendation. And we are, as staff, recommending this request for PD, for predominantly GB district uses, there are lists of limited document uses that are made prohibited, something really not appropriate, maybe not anywhere in GB district, but definitely not at this intersection. The south corner, I think we've all come to it, is now the south, or the southeast, southwest, now we're just called south corner. The other change in uses of a GB district requires an S U P, a special use permit for restaurant use. We just, this plan, staff and then the planning commission approved, allowed by right, S U P would, in this case, would basically be a site plan, and with a PD you're going to get that same site plan and the overview at that time. So if there's any developments to be required, we'll give away from the car section. There are some changes to the development standards in this PD versus the regular GB district use. So probably the biggest one is the change into the commercial development standards, which has a length of a wall, a B D, as I recall, and a sizable building. Those, to modify, says that you can have a single four building of 12,000 square feet. There is a concept plan, at least you can put on there, which is a concept plan that the planning commission approved. It also says that you can't have any single ten over 5,000 square feet. 5,000 square feet, just a matter of size and idea. A CBS slash Walgreens or one of the same pretty much, that's about 5,000 square feet. We also put a requirement in there that took, that allows that restaurant use, but requires some outdoor seating and some other things that would make it more of a restaurant, of course, it's just a fast food place. You could have that, but just going to have some outdoor seating requirements. Remove the facade material requirements, the state law pretty much included that. Let some of the window and lacing things in there, we're going to do. Also allowed, and at least if we could go through the, these, those renderings, yeah, uh, yeah, these are just some renderings that are not part of the request, just some things that the applicant provides. You can see there on the elevations, the zoning order still requires, it's called a three-part kind of construction base and then with a cap. Those things in there are stipulation, those things are still allowed by state law. You can't say what the materials are going to be, it's going to be red or stuck or some, but you can still make those required. This is a rendering that their architect showed, just some ideas of how it would look like. And those type construction ideas or form ideas are still required in this. I think that pretty much, the development plan, the concept plan, at least you showed it, is just a concept plan. A development plan and elevations, the zoning order is allowed set as an option, but it's not going to be required. A development plan and elevation is allowed to be looked through the planning commission and the city council. So, once they get closer to this, from the concept plan, they're closer to this, then they'll have kind of the authority on that. It shows a driveway and some other stuff on 205. That's not an even watch control here, that's text on. But likely, for what Lisa and I could look at the preliminary plans of what's happening at 205 intersection, they could probably get a right turn right out of 205. It's too close to the intersection, largely, to get a left turn. And then the same for 550, there's some control on that. There's a, an access engine on the back of the property that goes about two-thirds of the way in. That's in place there, so they can have access to that, if they need to make a call. I guess that's it. There was one letter of opposition, nothing I'm staying with, I guess, last week. Right across the street, Sonic, basically. Back, we did the calculation, that is less than 20%. If it's more than 20%, you have three quarters required. It was about an eight point seven or something, eight, eight percent of that plus. A three quarter of that.
You have any questions for Carl?
This isn't for scale.
No.
Or you've got an acre and a half that you're working with. You're assuming these buildings and these parking lots could go on that acre and a half?
Those, this concept plan, I understand. We limited, and it's really not, it's not really probably required from this, but we limited the amount of parking roads that we get front of it. The site's so small that you, you can only have maybe a light of parking, sort of seat park. It's not that big, it's not a big rock site.
But the next time that we see the proposal, it will, it will have everything on that?
It will have landscaping, it will have everything.
Parking.
Yeah, yeah, you know, this, this is probably, you know, there's probably eighty, ninety percent, you know, when you get into drawing your lines, a little narrower, and you'll have the exact number of spaces they'll need. Now, that kind of varies, obviously, if you have a retail use versus an office use in there, but I'm sure the parking is, could be the most flexible, probably, as if we're all.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, as far as, well, two questions. As far as parking availability, would you say that this meets the bare bones minimum? Or is this, do we have a lot, a lot of available parking? Or where do you think around?
It, it, you really can't say. This would comply as retail. Likely, it's not going to be a hundred percent retail. It's likely going to be some office type uses in there, insurance, name something like that, probably. This would be, this maxes it out, as if we're all retail or restaurant. If you put some office in there, likely it would be less parking. And I think we're, we're evolving to where some of the parking regulations that were put in effect thirty, forty, fifty years or whatever that was so carried forward, aren't really as relevant now. But as retail, one to two hundred, you're probably still pretty relevant. I think, I think nobody has a parking. And then, unfortunately, they come in, let's say they came in and, and didn't plan at all retail, office and retail, and then all of a sudden the office didn't work and they wanted to change retail. They don't have enough parking, want to get a CO or permit, they're not going to get it.
They don't need additional room for these things as well, when it's actually concrete construction, to make sure that...
And like I said, I think they will, they will try to, as many spaces as you can for, as if you're going to develop with the most parking generation. And then if you come with anything less, then you got it.
Is there, I'm just looking at the handicap parking, is there a specific ratio that has to do with that?
There, there is a ratio, and it usually is one per, yeah, one per 25 parking spaces. So they probably have whatever. There's other requirements on that. Access. Again, that's when they come into the building official, he's going to look at those construction laws.
Any other question? All right, it is 6:42, we're going to open this up for the public hearing. Mr. Palani, would you like to say anything before anybody else does? Or one of your representatives?
Sorry.
Would you push the button on that thing so it lights up? Thank you.
Mohammed Palani, and there, 205 and 550, we are trying to build a 1.5 acre lot for shopping center there with the sit-down restaurants. We, tonight, we tried to get the zoning change, we got approved last couple of weeks ago, with the planning and zoning, and they've been approved for the special permit for the restaurants, and the bigger building than 6,000 square foot. And tonight, we are here to get your approval and start moving forward on that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Any question? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak in the public hearing? Going twice? It is 6:44, public hearing is closed. All right, we'll move on to 6.2, discussion and action regarding, excuse me, discussion and action regarding consideration of an ordinance related to a request by Mohammed Palani on behalf of MFS Group LLC requesting a zoning change from GB General Business to a Plan Development District for General Business on 1.5 acre tract in the King Latham survey, Rockwall CAD property ID 10132, generally located south of FM 550 and State Highway 205. All right, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we confirm the zoning change from General Business GB to PD Plan Development.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, moving on to 6.3, discussion and action regarding consideration of an ordinance, second reading for final approval enacting a temporary moratorium on residential and commercial development in the city of McLennan-Chism's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Lisa?
Yes, sir. This item is the proposed building moratorium for the city's ETJ area for residential and commercial development. As discussed at two previous meetings, Rockwall County is in the process of rewriting their subdivision regulations. Our inter-local agreement regarding subdivision regulations with the county is also outdated, and those need to be redone, revised, once those county regulations are finished. This moratorium would provide a measure of protection in temporarily halting new permits in the ETJ until those new regulations and agreements are in place. Would not affect current developments, things that are already approved, or small subdivisions, one, two lot subdivisions that don't really affect infrastructure changes, or don't increase the density. Two public hearings were held, one in council and one in P and Z. Council, at the last meeting, voted to move forward. Tonight is the second required reading of the ordinance, so council may wish to approve or take action regarding the ordinance, and if you approve, read the caption into the record, if you so choose.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, approve the temporary moratorium on residential and commercial development in the city of McLennan-Chism's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Show that unanimous now. That requires me to read one little caption on here. This is ordinance, this ordinance, an ordinance to the city council of McLennan-Chism adopting and enacting a temporary moratorium to suspend the acceptance of permits, subdivision, plat applications, authorizations, and approvals necessary for the subdivision development of or construction of real property within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing findings of fact, providing exceptions, providing a waiver of procedure, providing a termination date, providing a severability clause, providing for publication and an effective date. All right, we're done with that one, moving on to 6.4, consideration for approvals of a contract for election services between the elections administrator of Rockwall County and the city of McLennan-Chism and Rockwall Independent School District. Show that.
Okay, this is a contract that we have been introducing the last few years, the addition of parking, they take your, they're getting in, they're asking to beg you, they'll be here to handle all of this all day, going in May 2nd. As far as I know, you can never have any problems, and this is a, they're fully supervised project. And the election amount before will be available to the school, the city school, after calculation is completed, because all the way home, you're not going to have any requirements website. And after that, it could be some provisional votes, so that's not final account. They did a lot of workers, they have electric jobs, they have to have an interpreter, alternate judges, there's quite a few employees involved in this. And we were, they have offered us a contract of 9,000, seventy dollars and fifteen cents per year.
And when is this?
May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay.
Does it include early voting as well? Early voting as well? It's already down?
No, for, for May 2nd, it's, it's, it includes everything.
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay, any questions for Sean? I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for the elections.
All right. Second? All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, moving on to 6.5, discussion and action regarding ad depository agreement between the city of McLennan-Chism and Wilmington Trust National Association. Lisa?
Yes, sir, this is a bank depository agreement with Wilmington Trust. Wilmington Trust is the trustee who holds and disperses funds related to the Sonoma PID. This agreement allows the city to open another account with Wilmington Trust. Rockwall collects, Rockwall CAD collects assessments associated with the PID, and those funds are direct deposited into Wilmington Trust. At this time, we need to open one additional account for Phase 1C, which is confusing because it's actually part of Phase 2, but that's the way they're numbered. Any fees associated with the account, as far as those bank fees, will be billed to the PID, not the city. And that's, that's what this request is, and that's what this agreement is.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city of McLennan-Chism, and the Wilmington Trust, National Association, should open a court review.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Aye. All right, moving on to 6.6, discussion and action regarding consideration of authorizing the city administrator to enter into an engagement agreement with Bickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta LLP for limited legal services related to water supply and sewer service issues. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to sign him on the agenda to engage a water attorney for legal advice related only to water and sewer services for future planning purposes. I think we're going to have a few questions coming up that may be kind of specialized, and not that Mr. Havel is not familiar with that, but they're, these water attorneys just know all the ins and outs. So, as we're adding some sewer service and we're starting to talk about utilities, kind of long-range planning, I think it would be wise to go ahead and get in, an attorney ready to just answer some questions as we move along. So this would be just a limited engagement type of agreement, just as needed.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on that one.
I'm going to motion to engage with other staff, Heath Delgado Acosta LLP for limited services related to water supply and sewer service.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So Lisa, this is a situation, I just want to confirm that it will run things by Mr. Hall initially, and if he feels that he, that we need to contact the specialist, is that?
We can absolutely do that way, yes.
Is that, you try to look, would you comment?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. I did look over the engagement, and Lisa's right, the water issues are kind of specialized. I don't think it's a bad idea if, now, if they, she has a couple quick questions or something like that, I don't, I don't think she needs to, you know, have a babysitter, but if we're talking about, hey, this is what they want us to do, and they send us something to review, or look at our pass or whatever, then I think, I think your suggestion is a good one, personally.
It would just come out of our legal services budget. I don't have that number in front of me, but we haven't, we're doing, we're under it at the moment, so I think we're going to be okay. If it starts to inch up there, I'll bring it back to you, and we'll talk about it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous. All right, moving on to 6.7, consider resolution updating the city McLennan-Chism personnel policies. All right, Lisa, do you need to say anything on this one?
This is the city's personnel policies. These were last updated October of 2018 by resolution. Any changes also has to be approved by council by resolution. At this time, staff is requesting that council consider the revisions that are in your packet. Most changes are for clarification purposes. The greatest change is to pay time off accrual involving the firefighters. So when we first started, we gave them the same accrual rate, and they, actually, because of the amount of hours they work in a pay period, we're making their accrual rate for PTO, pay time off, equivalent, or proportionate to the time that they put in. So that's the biggest change. All the other changes are really fairly minor amendments. I have had a couple of questions come up from council members, so if anybody wants to ask those, I'm, I'm happy to offer explanations or answer questions as you have them.
Any questions for Lisa?
Yeah, so, the, this is our, this is all of it, all of our agenda, has an amount of accrual that we need to assess?
I think it's 80, but yes. Yes. Just keep in mind, we can, we can always revise it at any time.
So there's, there's more to it than just?
No, that's it. That's it for now. That's what we have. You got it all.
Yeah, because there's, I just, there's, there's, there's forms, and there's a lot attached, so.
Oh, well, I didn't add the forms. Add, I, you've got the body of the agreement. The forms are going to be things like the employee sign, you know, acknowledgement forms of what they received, things like that.
That's why they're so much bigger.
You've got the, you've got the body of that.
Because I was confused on mine, and so, because we do not put the forms in here.
Well, there are not that many forms. Most of them, in there is acknowledgement that they, policies, and that they, they understand and they're responsible for reading them. The fire department is our only real department at the moment, and City Hall, we have three regular employees that work there, so our policies aren't going to be equivalent at this time to what some of our neighboring cities are, just because we're not as large. Chief does have separate policies for fire, he's got quite a few, and those are just referenced in the big policy manual. And his policies will grow and change as his department grows, and his standards are updated and things like that.
There's, you know, some things that I feel need to be added, so I was just wondering if that's all of it. I did look at the accrual rates that you guys mentioned, and can you tell me when these accrual rates went into effect?
The red line has not gone into effect yet, so that's what I'm asking to change. The accrual rates were the same until now for all employees, fire and regular employees.
Right. So can you, can you tell me when they went from, what this is, when was the, when was this from? 2018 or 15 or?
2018 was the last time this was updated, so you have, I think the red is the new proposed. That's what we're asking for approval today.
But are the, also, since you did adjust the public safety hours, should those all be in red, or are those all new?
I thought they were, are they not?
Page 128.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they were in red. The public safety has been revised, yes. Okay. The, nothing has changed on the PTO for regular employees, except that I took one of the floating holidays, and I just made it a regular PTO day, just for, it's easier that way for...
Okay, so you did take one of those in there?
I, I just moved it from holiday down to a PTO day, is all I did, so nobody's getting any more or less time off, it's just, we just put it in a different category.
And we're talking hours per, like, all of these are hours?
Those are hours per pay period, and then it's got the annual hours, and then it's got, the last column is the maximum allowed accrued hours. We set a maximum, just so we can keep our budget under control, at double of whatever you're allowed to accumulate in a year.
And where did we get all these numbers at? Like, 4.92 and?
For public safety, or for the, we reached out to the...
Well, I mean, just those numbers, where did we come up with the accrual per hour numbers?
That, that's what they were before. That's what they were before, except we added the PTO, the floating holiday in there, so there'd be eight additional.
When you say four, before what? When was, when was?
What's been in effect all previous years?
Since November 2018?
2018, and I don't think we, I don't know that it's changed before that. I think we've had, I think this, I think when we redid it last time, I don't think we added, changed the accrual rate.
I have a lot of questions.
I don't understand, what are you, what are you driving at with that? Because there's a formula that has to be used based on their stuff, and it's.
And I don't understand. Nobody can help me. Tell me what that formula is.
Our accrual rate's lower than that in most cities on average, and our number for D.
I understand that, but that doesn't help me. I need to know where those numbers came from and how to find them, because I have gone back and forth for weeks now and tried to figure this out, and I cannot figure it out. So, I need to know exactly. I think I was getting confused, because the numbers I'm getting are grayed off. And I just need an explanation, that's all. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not sure I quite understand, but the 4.92 hours is what a regular employee works, a non-public safety employee, that's what they accrue over a two-week pay period. So, for every two weeks worked, a regular employee such as myself, 4.92 hours is what they accumulate.
Will you figure out, for a regular employee, they get X amount of vacation, paid time off hour, but it's categorized?
So, is this, is this, those numbers are throughout, like, other cities and other places?
I believe ours are actually less than the surrounding cities.
So, to do the math, you take the 4.92 and you times it by 26, because it's a.
That's a, that's a total amount of the amount of days that this city previously has approved for PTO within.
Yeah, so that's 128 hours.
Three years, yes.
And so, you divide that then by eight, and that would be the certain number of day, actual days. Do y'all take your days off, do you take off in hours, or do you take off days?
You can take it in hours. I think we, we do a minimum of one hour.
Okay, so, what, so, the way that I'm reading this, the 4.92 is for a two-week pay period. So, you take 4.92 and you times that by 26, and I think you come up with 128, or 127 point something.
Yeah.
So, that would be their, their vacation hours for a year.
So, it's 16 days?
Roughly.
Roughly 16 days.
16 days.
16 days for a first year?
Zero to 36 months.
Zero to 30, zero to 36 months.
Why is it that other places are only 80 hours or 40?
There's not many cities that I've worked with where 40 is the max that you carry.
Well, they may not be, they may be split up into vacation hours and sick hours, and ours was combined at the last time this was adopted into just paid time off hours, and it doesn't distinguish between the two. So, one may be like vacation hours and sick hours.
So, if you look at those other cities, ma'am, and see that, that 40 hours, do they have their sick time separate? A lot of cities have it that way, so you've got to look at all those hours total. We, this city, is changing to a PTO, so your sick time and all that is all in one period. So, it's just one number.
That's great to know, because I did not know. That's what I'm saying, is I have racked my brain trying to figure this out, and I feel like I'm missing something, and that's definitely what we're missing. So, okay, that helps me.
Could I ask you a couple of things that I've already spoken to you about, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's thing? As far as page 112, the sub-paragraph E, marriage of current employees, I wrestled with this a little bit. I would like to potentially simplify that, to just say, city employees cannot be in immediate supervision or subordinate positions of each other, something like that, and I didn't know if that was illegal, if that was okay. There's probably a more legal way to say it, but just so that people weren't in direct supervision of their husband or wife, or, do you believe that we need to say something like co-pacate with, instead of just saying marriage, we need to also implement that?
I think you would have that in, in our, in my career field, yeah, I think that would have to be part of it as well, but that does make it sound a little bit better that, you know, people are working on one department, and at some point, you know, down the road, they build a relationship, you know, one of them has to quit based on the way it is now, they're out of their job. So, we do know, you know, there are people that, you know, they, they live together for many, many years and have never been married because they didn't want to lose their job, but they cohabitate.
So, are you suggesting that, like, after the first sentence under C, that we take out the rest of that? And just leave it as no employee in the relationship will supervise, review, or process the work of the other?
Yes, and that's, this is what I.
I have, I have no issues with that.
The other one is on page 130, under other employment during PTO. Perhaps just title that unscheduled PTO, and just say unscheduled PTO is at the discretion of the supervisor. Because I think we're predisposing certain conditions that may or may not happen, and I think it's, it's better just to leave that up to the discretion of the supervisor.
Have we defined scheduled PTO in the policy?
I don't think there's a definition for that.
I thought I saw that they had to give it two weeks notice in advance.
Okay, that's the definition of scheduled.
Where they schedule that time off, yeah, but you have the unfortunate.
I think we're fine as long as we have one of them defined, because then clearly, if one of them is defined and the other one is not, they're not going to be the same thing, so that's, that's fine. I didn't want to get in a situation where if we don't have schedule defined, they're like, well, no, I mean, I scheduled it. Well, who's to say, well, I just told you yesterday, put it right in the fill.
My view on it is that if I have an employee that continually calls in the day before, that's considered unscheduled PTO. That's outside of our policy, even department policies, that you have to give two weeks' notice for any vacation day, so if they continually take off the day before, they call in the morning else to take PTO, that's where I think unscheduled PTO would fall into play, and I would have to obviously look into that issue.
And I'm fine with it, and that's why I think we're safe and protected. As long as we have scheduled defined, anything that doesn't fit scheduled is going to be, by virtue of that definition, unscheduled. So, we're good. It's kind of like scheduled. We put this right here, falls anywhere outside of that, it's unscheduled.
So, this particular section that she's referring to is about taking a second job or working somewhere else while you're off from your job here?
Yeah, see, that to me, I would not be in support of. So, if we were taking PTO.
I think what she's suggesting is it should be at the discretion of the supervisor, and I have, I don't have an issue with that.
No, I don't either, so that, I agree with that then.
Rather than just outright forbidding in here, perhaps there's a.
They can't take PTO and then go work a, we would say, an off-duty gig somewhere.
Right.
For a volunteer, and it also said for a volunteer somewhere. I just think that should be up to the supervisor.
I have no issues with that.
No, I, I agree with that.
Well, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
When it comes to that specific piece of it, there's an issue I have with that. There needs to be something in there that protects the city, the individual departments, whether it's fire department or anything like that, because if you take an unscheduled day off to go do something like he's referencing, work a secondary job, and we have to bring somebody in to work to fill that position, we're not paying somebody overtime, so that individual can go make extra money.
How are you going to know? How are you going to?
There are ways to find out.
I think we just really.
We have had officers counseled before, because they have taken off and they've gone out and worked off-duty jobs.
I think it covers it, because if I, if I have one of my troops that continue to take off, and I find out they're taking off, so they can go over here and go work part-time for Sunnyvale Fire Department, obviously, I'm going to, I'm going to know about it. Don't mean chief's talking, but that would be something that I would address, is by putting that verbiage in there where the supervisor has discretion, that's where, it would be up to me to make sure I maintain that, not saying somebody that can't take PTO, if he schedules.
I just want to make sure we're covered, because I don't want to see individuals taking off, and us having to pay somebody else to come in and work their shift.
Well, that's exactly why we had it in here, is to prevent someone abusing, you know, taking off, because maybe they got paid more somewhere else to go work aside, aside job.
I think we have more of a leadership supervisor issue than.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, I think it would be the rare case that we're going to see this, especially at the moment, because we've got so few employees, but as.
Malcolm would have had any issues with that now, probably.
Right, but if we did hear about something, having it in the policy gives us a way to, to control that, or reprimand an employee, or say, we can't do that.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you make a good point, in all seriousness, so I do think it's addressed from the discretion of the supervisor, because you would hope that the supervisor would be asking that exact same question and finding out, hey, what, and if we got a problem, if the supervisor is not doing that, and we find out that, you know, one of the employees is running off doing this, you know, three or four times a month, we're like, the supervisor is going, wait, what's going on here? There's a balance there, because you don't want to be too totalitarian and dictatorial in your writing and have everything written down, like, we've got to follow, you do want some basic principles. Man, I just tell you, just, I think, I agree with what you're saying so much, that we ever, if we ever get in a position that we need to actually put that in writing, we have bigger problems.
And the reason, the reason I bring that point up is it's very clear in our policies where I'm working, that you cannot take a day off to go work another job if it requires the city to bring another employee in to work your position.
But if they've got scheduled PTO, scheduled PTO.
If I'm scheduled off for a week, that's different.
They can do whatever.
But I want to make sure on unscheduled, that we're very clear on that, because it could get abused.
And I think it goes back to the supervisor, because that's what I wanted to confirm, was if I schedule two weeks off for my PTO, and I take it, and then I've got a fish and god trip that comes up, I'm not violating policy, because I had to schedule for two weeks prior to it. That's just pertaining to the unscheduled PTO. I think either way, I'm good with either way. It's going to be up to the supervisor. I'm going to have to make sure that I'm doing my job if I continue to have employees, and I find out they're tending to pools, or mowing yards, or, you know, working off-duty, working in another fire department or something like that, that's, it's going to be something I'm going to have to.
Or doing a volunteer thing.
Right.
Because it says volunteer.
All right, any other questions?
Oh, sure. Okay, and under page 165, political activities. I would like to reword the last sentence where it says, no city employee is prohibited from becoming a candidate for political office. Can we just keep it simple and say, city employees are permitted to run for political office, and then you've added in already that for the following activities, they're prohibited. I don't have any problem with that, but I think it might just read cleaner and just say point blank, city employees are permitted to run for political office.
That's fine with me.
Okay, and then page 166, just for consistency, change sex to gender in the last paragraph, and more of a policy thing I think needs to get included in this is a section on how we handle those city employees that might be in the reserve or the national guard, because we don't have any section on that.
Okay, what, what did you specifically want to?
Well, like, don't we, don't we need to have a policy that if someone's called to reserve?
How we handle their reserve duty, will they get military time off or not, correct? Yes.
I don't know what that is, but I think there's some.
We have, it just should never be put into policy. So, I can pull it back out and get with Lisa, and we could get that put together and bring back before council, if that's.
Okay, Chief, thank you.
I'm fine with all those changes, if, if maybe we could just, if you feel so inclined, approve, approve or consider approval of what we have here, and then we can bring that back to you as a revision, once we kind of nail that one down.
I would rather personally do it all at one time, for consistency.
My only concern is that the fire guys start getting their accrual time, as it's supposed to be, as soon as possible. That was my only concern about getting this in place as soon as possible.
You can make it, if you want to, make it more attractive to March 10. I mean, I do understand what Lisa's saying, and I appreciate her looking out for, seriously, for, for the employees, but not, not everybody does, but I think, even though they're small changes, there are a lot of little changes, and then we're adding a whole new section in there, just for the sake of clarity, less confusion, I do think it's better to just go ahead and have the resolution that you put on the consent agenda next meeting, don't even, because it's all going to be on there, and y'all will have seen it, so just, you know, prove it on the consent agenda.
Do you want to bring it back on the 24th?
All right, we're clear on that one? Move on to 6.8, Consider Brian Lane for Appointment as Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate Member. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Lane as the, one of the alternate members for Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous? 6.9, Discussion and Action Regarding Consideration of Utilizing $25,162 of Fire Department Capital Fund Balance for Purchase of Personal Protective Equipment for Firefighters, Chief.
All right, well, council, as you know, and you've seen in your packet there, this lovely new policy that we've had to put together to get ready to go off to the commission to keep compliance. Eight of these pages is the outcome of the new NFPA changes, so the 17 we have there. And so, some of the things we have to look at, assessments, we have to look at when we decide on how we're going to keep our troops compliant, how we're going to keep them safe. You'll see inside there, we have new on-scene gross decon policies to make sure that we get as much of the contaminants off, any type of IVLH atmosphere, so when we say immediately dangerous to life and health atmosphere, that can be grass fires, structure fires, that's that good old cooking stove fire, somebody fails to put, you know, open a chimney flue, you know, a chimney fire, anything that involves smoke, car fire, we're required to do some type of decon process and then do an advanced cleaning of our gear. So, that requires a process and requires time to be able to down that gear and get them guys in some second gear and get that gear cleaned, you know, and dry. And so, reaching out to lots of the companies that are out there and talking to a few of them and narrowing it down to what's the best solution, so we don't have to spend, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars for two sets of gear for everybody. We come up, this company here called Viking, so they have come up with a gear meets and exceeds a lot of NFPA standards in regards to, you know, water rates and things like that to be retained, and to come in, instead of having two full sets of gear, so if you don't mind, I'll put it quickly, because I know. Set of gear requires three components. So, you have three components to this gear. You have the outer, protective layer, then you have your thermal barrier, and you have a moisture barrier. So, all three of these components makes up the gear that we wear each and every day.
So, that makes up the actual jacket or coat?
Correct, so your jacket, coat, same concept with your pants, same, same three layers that you have to have. So, it's an additional weight, as you can tell, and you, you more than have to model here, second, so I can demonstrate, but, so, what they have come up with is, this set of gear out here, on, on average, we, we spending more than $2,600 to about $3,200 per sit. That means coat and pants for all three components. Well, now, what they've done is, instead of having to buy that, there's a set of gear out there now, that you don't have to buy two full complete sets of the three, three layers that you require of that. So, this particular gear is designed now to where, once we have that IVLH exposure, we can now, instead of having two full sets of gear, paying all that money for this thermal barrier and moisture barrier, we only need one. So, we purchase this gear now, on that scene, we're allowed to zip out, I don't know where it was, I don't know where it would have to be, I know he has aspirations to be a fireman.
No.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The only reason I'm doing this is because I'm the only one closest to the justice office.
So, as you can see in this gear, it allows us to be able to reduce the time that we have our gear down, so instead of me now having to send, send, send two sets of gear off for advanced cleaning, twice a year now, which NFPA, which it requires to do. No, now what I can do is I can just take the outer shell off of this gear and I can get it cleaned and then put it back to service. So this gear is designed for us to only purchase, we'll touch on it for a minute later. All right. So I zip out. And this is what the firefighter do. So once they put on an atmosphere, they're going to have latex gloves on, they're going to take this outer shell, the partner's going to help them with gloves on, we're going to be able to roll this off of their sleeves, off their gear. So I'm going to do the same thing over here again, partner's going to help out and then go to keep all those contaminants away, away from the body. Now, he can keep his thermal air, he or she can keep their thermal air moisture barrier on. So once they get to this point, we have decon wipes, so they will completely decon their face, the neck area where our high exposure of our contaminants. Once they get deconbed, they'll grab their new shell. All right. And I actually brought two of them, you can see, identical shells, everything can be done of.
He looks natural in firefighter gear.
So now, what's nice, you're asking what this strap is, this is called a DRD strap. This is a drag strap. Firefighter goes down, pulls the flap, grab that strap and it's a, it's a rest part. Just like some company's belt, so this is good for... So now this firefighter can come back in, we can, he can snap those once he gets ready to take it off, and we can come down, zip them into their gear.
It's like he's born to wear it.
Meant to be.
So you'll have two of these for every, every firefighter?
Yes, so, anyway, so I would now zip this gear. We would continue this process. Now this firefighter's ready to go, all I will do is clean that outer shell. Contaminants on the outer shell, not the inner. So you get two sets of gear for one. So instead of $2,500 per set, this particular set is $31, I think $31, we got to go for, for two full sets of gear for each firefighter. Pants are the second thing, zip out the waist, the bottom snap, and we put it out.
They want to have that, complete that ability.
So NFPA 1851, the new changes, the cancer mission that come out for firefighters, this is the, one of the big changes, like now it's just approved, been, I think, $9 million for second set of fire gear for all the firefighters. So since we're a smaller agency, this setup here, now we can only buy a handful of sets, and that's just to get full-time staff in and out. Now I can take their seven sets of gear back, I can get it cleaned, I can put it on the shelf. I don't have to clean that once a year instead of twice a year because it's not in service. So it's reducing my cleaning costs as well by doing it that way. And it will allow us to have two sets of gear for all our staff, whether they're volunteer, part-time, or full-time.
So how long before we have to replace this?
Ten years. All of it has a ten-year, that's, that's a couple of changes that came several years ago. There probably had some good people in office to push that we have to throw here away ten years, no matter what, helmets, boots, even if it was to pass the test, we can no longer use it after ten years.
And any of the supplement come up with the NFPA?
Yes, so we add some older gear. We actually had to spend about $5,000 on first initiated to get a bunch of repairs done to it. So we have initial sets of gear for everybody. This will now start allowing us to have those second sets throughout. So we would have multiple sizes, so we're not going to issue two sets of gear to part-time and volunteers. We would have gear on the shelf, so if they're working and they catch that structure fire, we can go down to the quartermaster's closet, we have a size, we can go, here's your pants, here's your coat. It may not be the exact fit like normal measurement, but it's, it's pretty much close to the numbers. If they're still in service, then we can wash the gear.
But Chief, we're to a point where we, we have to replace what we have, is that correct?
No, sir. We're not to a point to replace what we have. We have gear that's still in service. We have, our oldest gear has about four years left on it, which is the gear that a lot of some of the good have carried over from the integration of the two agencies. We bought gear in 2017 there at the end when we merged for 2018 to, for the department. So we have one set for everybody right now. We do have several sets on the shelf. This would just allow us to have multiple sets on the shelf to put us in compliance. So if anybody was to be involved in a structural fire or an IDLH atmosphere, I would have gear to put them in.
So right now, everybody just has one set?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But because of the new guidelines and regulations, we're trying to...
Okay.
Yes.
So prevents downtime, prevents some of the maintenance costs or the cleaning costs that I'll have to have. With anything on a shelf that's serviceable, that's not issued, I only have to have it cleaned, advanced cleaning once a year. The second advanced cleaning, we can do in-house, which we have, several of our people now are trained in advanced cleaning, trained myself and several others with the two sets of gear, types of gear we have now, and then we have somebody certified to do advanced cleaning as well in this.
So when the new guidelines take effect?
Came out about three months ago, four months ago. So we have to, so the policy that you have before you that I had to read, to add, to redo the NFPA 1851, that has to be to the Texas Commission on Fire Protection by March 31st. We have to say that here's our policy and we're now following this policy. In the, in that post, you also see purchase of the decon wipes. That's some of the new decon procedures that we're going to use so when firefighters, when they come out, as they get out of this gear, they're going to decon themselves completely before they put a clean gear on. And, you know, we're never going to get 100% of it. Often we do, you know, we will be required on scene to do a gross decon with, with the detergent and moisture before we even leave. This gear, even though it was cleaned on scene, has to go in a different department, can't be carried back in a cabin of vehicle like we normally do. It's a lot of change, but I welcome the change because of so many firefighters nowadays that are, that are, not only lung disease, but they have, you know, they're getting all different, different types of cancers from different parts of their body that most people think would be wearing gear. Firefighters look at one of the weakest points, our groin area and our bits. This gear has a new design, it's a baffle system, so it pushes everything out and nothing can come in, contact with the body.
So Chief, this, the amount that you're putting right now, or you're doing now is
Just to get seven sets. I think that's what I have, or seven sets.
And so if you require anybody else, will it be two or seven?
No, ma'am, because we would still, we would have an extra supply of gear on the shelves that we would be able to bring off and still have enough gear there to get those two sets. Full-time staff will have two sets of gear issued. If we add two more people, that six full-time staff is included in this number here, wherever they may be. So, sorry, I just realized what you were...
So Chief, you had two dumb questions?
No, sir.
So why are we buying 10 hoods when we're buying seven boots and seven coats?
So we have some additional supply in our quartermaster. We're out, we're completely out of helmets and boots. We, we have no spare helmets, no hoods, no gloves, so we're just trying to, that would give us a few extra in quartermaster supply to be able to issue out if we have a, a River Terry, this is, this is the version of it.
Gotcha.
Okay. So it's just ask some additional supply. We're out of several things, so we're buying a little by little. You just ask some supply.
And then my other dumb question was, there's the wipes case?
Yes, sir.
How many wipes comes in case? And how many do you use in a typical?
I mean, you could use three, four. I mean, grass fire, any, any type of incident where we're exposed to it, you can, you're going to use one for your neck area, you're going to use one for your arms and hands, anywhere that could be, that has exposure. So the case sounds like a lot, but it's going to be a case that lasts us for, for a long time. We won't have to buy more.
It's curiosity as much as anything else.
And I apologize, I don't remember exactly how many is in a case, I mean...
Is it 10, 100?
It'd probably be more like a hundred. Or more. And I can get that number and get it to you, but I don't remember exactly, but it's, it's a good amount.
That's a smaller purchase, so if he did need additional ones, if that's the concern, that he could probably buy that out of his regular budget funds.
Correct.
All right, if there's not any other questions for Chief, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 25162 for the Fire Department Capital Fund for purchase of the PPE equipment for the firefighters.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second? If there's not, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Show that unanimous?
This gear is the exact gear color, this is the exact sample of the molly gear is what you would be purchasing.
Do you put their last names on there?
Yes, ma'am, just on the back, we can tell, it would have clinician across the back and it would have the last name of the firefighter, then I'll tell.
All right, moving on to 610, Discussion and Action Regarding Budgeting Additional Funds For The Amount Of $45,000 To Hire Two Full-Time Firefighters To Fill Safer Positions And To Add A New Shift Covering 7A To 7P. Chief?
All right, well, here's the next one. As you know, recently discussions since October have been assessed in the Fire Department with staffing, vehicles, vehicle maintenance. Obviously, the station is a big one here lately that we've been high-hanging with. So most recently, we had made a staffing change. The decision was to no longer have the assistant chief's position. That had nothing to do with Patrick Murphy's knowledge, skills, and abilities whatsoever. It was a tough decision, but it was a decision that I've been looking at for a while on what's going to best set us up for future when it comes to this fire department. So the decision was to actually dissolve that position. That position was dissolved March 1st. Patrick Murphy worked his last, last shift on the 28th. So when doing that, started looking at how we can set this department up without, we're not looking to add a full-engine company, but I'm trying to do everything I can to get closer to compliance with two-in, two-out. So being able to have that two-in, two-out, we'll cover when we first arrive on scene. And so, as you know, two of those, Patrick Murphy covered one of those safer grant positions and then one of them was actually covered in the full-time equipment. So what I'm asking now is to go ahead and fill those full-time spots. So that would give you two full-time people per shift, A, B, and C shift that you currently have now. The 7A to 7P would be a part-time position. Of course, part-time positions are never guaranteed, but it's a part-time position to give us that 7A to 7P coverage. And the reason why I looked at the 7A to 7P coverage instead of 24 or 7P to 7A is if you look at that little graph I gave you there, it shows our call volume. So from midnight, which you see here on the left, all the way to 11 o'clock, all the way on the right. And you can see from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to 1900 there, that is our peak time and our, well, actually, it goes a little further, you can take it on down to 2200 if you want, but I, I cut it off to kind of show the 7A to 7P, how this would benefit the community and the city. We would have that third, three-man engine company. So Monday through Friday during the week, that would get us to that four-man engine company per se because I'm that extra body, I'm that fourth body. So when we pull up on scene, we're able to meet that two guys going in and still have two guys outside ready, at the ready if need be, because where the two-in, two-out room comes from. So that is our peak hours when it comes to our calls. That's 348 calls. This is from October 1 of 2019 to December 31st. 348 calls during that time. So you can see from that graph, this, this would help cover those peak hours.
Chief, did you say October or January?
October, oh, sorry, January 1 of 2019 to December 31st, 2019, for a full year.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Try to answer. In these numbers, I had, I actually contacted our CPA, spoke with them, a decision in regards to putting these positions, how we affect the budget this year. This year, we lowered our fire department budget down by $67,000. So yes, we're going back up a little bit, but we did reduce it. Next year, we're looking at rough numbers right now, $20,000 to $30,000 increase if we kept everything the same with all these staff members in place. And I actually have Ray working on those numbers as well. To make sure my numbers are accurate. That's everything, yes, ma'am. Basically, you're going to take that one position and put two and a half positions in play. You only have benefits for the two full-time staff members and then the part-timers will just cover their work and it's comp on the part-time staff members.
All right, if there's no other questions for Chief, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve additional funds in about $45,000 to hire two full-time firefighters to fill safer positions covering 7A to 7P.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second, just so we can spur some discussion on it.
Okay, now open for discussion.
I think it's a good initiative. I think it's something that we're going to need. My only concern is, and what I would like to suggest, and I don't know the ramifications of this, is we put it into the budget cycle for the, for the next year, for 2021, only because it's, it's going to be a change in policy because we're adding new personnel. And I want to see how it impacts the future funding for the, with the safer grant because are we not going to have less, we're going to have less percentage of the safer grant next year?
Right, so that was the other thought process in implementing this program. Now would give this council basically a year and a half to see if this new staffing model would work for this community. I believe it'll work for many years to come, barring some significant expansion of growth all of a sudden. So that would give us a year and a half to, to run this process to see if it's going to be beneficial to the community. So that was one of the other reasons of why we, or I requested to do it now.
Well, what would be the impact of not doing that until, until October 1st?
Just filling those two, just continuing, continuing normal operations, which is two full-time on one, one full-time, part-time on B, on one shift and another full-time, part-time.
So status quo?
It's status quo, absolutely, ma'am. And, and our other reason is the big push for it is to have that third person during the day. And the main reason is a lot of the, a lot of the troops that we have now that were responding during the day, well, they've had life changes. They've had new jobs come into play. And so my staffing during the day of additional personnel to be able to respond to a call outside of your staffing is, has dropped significantly. I'm down to two, and it just depends on whether they're doing anything or not on those particular days. So having that additional support would, would definitely help our response.
But we do have two firefighters for each shift now.
Correct, right now.
And then we would need to rely on the volunteers or the backup from other agencies.
Correct. And so it would continue on. So during the day, I already know that my staffing level is dropping. I don't have the people that we used to have to be able to respond to calls during the day. And you can see that's a significant time, 7A to 7P is when our calls come in. So I, and I understand that and I know that. So yes, we do count on other agencies mutually aid, for sure. We can't do, we wouldn't do without that, anyway. But that's, that's some of the key is to try and get those positions in play. The reason why we don't, I'm not looking at doing the 7P to 7A is because all those people now after 7:00 PM are available to be there to be that second engine company or to catch that second medical call while we're out on that, that initial call. So that's, that's some of the reasons why, just the 7A, 7P decision.
Chief, do you know what, you may not know this off the top of your head, do you know what percentage of these numbers are in the ETJ versus in the CBA?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but that's some of the numbers I can, I can get to you.
If you've looked at the previous reports, they're probably 50/50. Of the amount of calls we have coming in on a, on a daily basis, 50/50.
It's the last few numbers, it's, it's close.
Would it make it harder for you to wait until October 1st or...?
Nothing's hard on me. We'll adapt and overcome the way we've done it. We'll adapt and overcome the way we've done since, since we started this thing, so no, no matter.
Any other questions for the chief? If there's not any other discussion, all in favor?
Chief, we can wait, I've got to wait.
Counsel, all I can do is present something to you and give you my explanations and justification. And if you choose to wait, then what can I do? I'm not going to.
If we came up with another situation throughout until October, we can readdress this.
Let, let me remind counsel, I hate to do this, we've made a motion, we've made a second, we either vote it up, or we vote it down.
Mayor, may I ask a question to Chief? This came about just recently, so did this have anything to do with the increase in the structure fires that we've had just since January?
Yes ma'am, you know, we've had, since I've been here, we've run eight structured fires.
How many?
Eight. The last two were February, we had two big structure fires in February, which a couple of you were privy to watch. And so, that staffing model, that third person is going to now allow for, for our staff to focus on their positions. So right now, I have two men that have to play the role of driver engineer, firefighter driver engineer and captain. And so, they split those roles, so it is, the last major structure fire in Kingsbridge, we had water on the fire within eight minutes and 24 seconds. Having that third body reduces those numbers down into the fives, those sixes. So it is a benefit to it.
Took longer to drill that in.
What's that?
On that fire.
Took longer for what?
To get water on that fire.
Well, yeah, because of the lake, absolutely, yeah, yeah, because people move into these areas where the hydrants are far.
Folks, I might have to put a stop to this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Citizens can't get in the middle of this discussion up here.
Were, were all of those structure fires the recent ones this year? Because there were like three, right, since January?
Correct.
Were all of those during the daytime hours of seven to seven time period?
Two of them were, and one wasn't either. But to, to just follow up, to get water, that was not an issue, not a problem on fire department's abilities, but staffing does help achieve those goals a little bit faster. Another big issue with that one was the hydrant was so far back, we had to do a tanker shuttle. We ended up doing tanker service on that particular fire.
So if you have two plus yourself on a scene, you have to wait until you get some mutual aid for a fire?
It does delay the time to actually make entry, to meet the two-in, two-out requirement, yes ma'am.
What he's asking for is to make sure we're doing things properly, we're doing things quickly, and we're doing things safely. I, let me finish, I'm still, still speaking. I don't like the fact that we, and it is your vote, I think we're playing with, and I don't mean this to sound wrong, because it sounds corny, I think we're playing with fire on waiting until October. We have had a lot of structure fires recently. You're now playing with people's lives, you're playing with people's livelihood, whether it's their business, their home. He's asking to be able to get the bodies in place, to be able to handle these kind of calls, and he has the numbers to justify it right here. If, if we think waiting on mutual aid, mutual aid could come from Rockwall, it could come from Loy City, it could come from Terrell. It depends on what they're caught up in, too. They may not be able to get here in a.
If they're available, right, if they're available. I mean, there's been times that we were called recently for mutual aid call, we were on two separate calls in our own community, we couldn't provide it, because we didn't have the staffing.
Because the numbers he's already given you of what's in place, some of those shifts are part-timers. We may not be able to guarantee that they're here all the time.
Right, can I say one more thing when it goes to staffing? So how this would also benefit is if we have that mutual aid call, I'm going to use Heath, and they need a, need a crew. Two-man, two-man engine company would be a crew. We could still keep the captain, the officer on shift, and now still keep a body back to make sure that we maintain integrity with inside our district, as well of that next medical call, or that next car accident, or car fire, or, or structure fire if it may happen. So it does give us more options.
So what we're trying to vote on right now is either yes or no, unless we amend our.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
What is it, we just?
We have to, we have to say yes or no on that crew for the $45,000.
Or we just?
Are we referring to a budget amendment because we're changing the funds? Asking for additional funds, ma'am, is that what you're asking?
No, I mean, like, he just, he's made a motion, unless we amend our motion.
Oh.
Revisit this. Are we still in the discussion phase? So, I guess, how come you didn't present this in, say, September? When, because nothing's really changed since September? So I'm just.
Call volume has changed. Call volume has increased since we integrated.
We don't have an Assistant Chief anymore.
So I don't have an Assistant Chief anymore. I did away with that position, because he played a role toward, he was available at times to go on, go to calls. So we adjusted that position to make sure now that we have a minimum two-man staffing, two firefighters staffing, my apologies, because we don't have firefighters as well, two firefighters staffing at all times, and that third is just that 7A, 7P for those gals. So, that's why it wasn't presented in September and October. I've, I've been assessing the department's needs now since October. And with everything, we have going, station, equipment, people maintenance, that's why it wasn't presented at that time.
So what is budget loss, where are we on this?
This would come from surplus from this year's budget. I believe we had about $260,000 to $270,000 surplus this year. So if, if we, we use some of it for other decisions, but we still have the funds to cover it this year. And then, of course, if we kept it for next year's budget, we'd have to roll it into that.
Correct.
Mayor, ma'am, we as a city provide a few services, one of them is fire. And I hope that we all want to do it to the best of our ability, so, you know, I'm in favor of it.
All right, if there's no further discussion, got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So I've got two ayes, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We now have a 50/50 split, which means I get the privilege of voting. I vote in favor of it. Moving on to 611, Discussion and Action Regarding City Council Approval Of A Memorial Day Event Beheld At City Hall. Lorna?
This is a, this is a easy discussion item, just seeking, seeking council approval if you would like to have a Memorial Day ceremony on the 25th of May, which I will orchestrate.
Is that the actual day?
Yes.
Okay.
I will orchestrate in conjunction with the local American agency.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion, I'm getting excited now. I'll entertain a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion that we approve holding Memorial Day event at City Hall on the 25th of May.
Okay, do I have a second? So, all right, any discussion on that? I like the idea. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, number seven, Updates, Discussion and Direction of Staff. I don't think we have anything right there that I can think of, so we'll move to eight. Reports, announcements, oh, I'm sorry, let me step back. Under number seven, talk to Lisa about a possible workshop?
I think we're getting to that point where we're going to start thinking about budget, but I also think we need to start thinking about some long-range utility planning, water and sewer. I'm suggesting that it might be time to have a workshop session, no decision-making, but just an opportunity for us to discuss and plan regarding utilities, water and sewer. And I thought maybe March 31st, if we wanted to keep it on Tuesday, and I wanted to see if you all were interested in that, and if you were, your availability for a meeting.
Do it at 6:30?
That would be my suggestion.
It's the last Tuesday at the moment.
I'm not sure what shift that's on, so I don't know how that affects Councilmember Bloom.
I'm good.
All right. Kind of iffy?
Yeah, there's something that we won't do. I mean, maybe nothing.
That's fine.
Which one?
Let's look at it, and then we'll address that if you.
March? It's a B shift, a B shift, so.
He's, he is B shift right now.
B shift, so he will be.
So let's go ahead and look at doing that, and then we'll, if somebody can't make it, we'll figure something else. All right. If we're done on that part, we'll move to reports and announcements. Folks, if you have not considered joining our Economic Development Committee, we would like our citizens to get involved and be a part of that. So basically, what I'm saying is, if you haven't applied and you've shown an interest, please apply, okay? The other thing is, I had the privilege, Ms. Lorna and I both had the privilege to attend a conference on Thursday and Friday in Frisco for elected officials. Lorna will get into another piece of it here in a minute, but one of the breakout sessions that we went to was, was titled over disruptors. And I know when you hear the word disruptor, it can, it can make you think of several different things. Well, what it keyed in on was the individuals that like to come into governmental offices and ask outlandish requests, or come in there and just do what they can to stop the day-to-day operations of that government entity. I will tell you that the main focal point for that breakout session was, and some of you will probably remember this in the last month or two, the individuals that have gone to the Rockwall County Courthouse and chanting, wearing pajamas amongst other things, using chalk and drawing all over the courthouse grounds. It was a focal point of that whole breakout session. What some of you may not realize is that whole, that whole individual group that did that at Rockwall County originated out of an arrest that was made in Loy City of a guy that was doing something very similar in holding up signs with profanity, and basically saying some very un-nice things about what you should do with the government. And the minute law enforcement would come by, he'd flip the sign over, it'd have something really nice to say on it. And then when they would leave, he'd flip it back over. You know, the state of Texas, very fortunate, profanity is still against the law if somebody is offended. But that whole, that whole class was very informative, and it was an eye-opener to a lot of public officials. I am one of the officers that was, in my day job, I'm one of the officers that was involved in that arrest, that caused a lot of that situation, that still goes on to this day in Rockwall. Those people are still facing additional court dates. But what people don't realize is the degree to which these people do this. They displayed a video rant from one of the individuals, very, very graphic, very, very ugly in the way he was screaming and yelling in the video about how they wanted to kill every police officer in Rockwall County. And the way that they videoed themselves addressing people in different government offices, you know, as a police officer, we're told we're not allowed to be offended. I felt bad for these administrators and these secretaries and these front-office personnel that had to go through some of the stuff these guys did, because they belittled them to a point of, I don't know how they kept their calm. It was very ugly. And that's the, that's what we face today. There are people that think that they can come in and do that to not only government offices, but to businesses as well. And it's horrible, it's horrible. But that was, that was one of the, one of the breakout sessions we did. Very, very informative stuff that we learned with other cities, other cities our size, as well as some of the bigger cities and some of the things that they're doing. The only other thing I got right now is, it's spring break. This is the second day of the week of spring break, just make sure you're paying attention, there's kiddos out everywhere. I got a chance to walk around in my neighborhood with my grandson today, and get to hear children laughing and kids out playing, so be conscious of kids out and about in the neighborhoods, because they're definitely not watching for you or your car. And that's all I have. Ms. Lorna?
Sure, to piggyback a little bit on what Mayor Short talked about at the Elected Officials' Conference, we went to one session that was dealt with small towns under what, $25,000, I think?
Under $10,000.
$10,000 population, and a big discussion about Airbnbs and regulating Airbnbs, and half were for it, half were against it. Even within our own county, spoke to Rockwall, they, they don't regulate it, Heath does. So I think Airbnbs are, are a hot topic, and as you pointed out, Mr. Hollis, it's something you've got to try carefully. But there were some good ideas out there, if we decide we want to introduce any type of ordinances or anything having to do with Airbnbs. Secondly, and to me, hit really hard home, was the new crunch of the budget cycle with the H House Bill 2 requirement to have an election if you have your tax rate increased by a certain percentage. So nuts and bolts, what it means to us council members is that we're going to be getting the tax rolls on July 25th, that's when it'll be sent out to the cities. And we will have until August 19th, which is the date you have to let the state know if you're going to have it on the ballot to get that budget set, to determine if we do need to increase the tax rate. At least, that's how I read it, that's how I read it.
If it's over, what we're allowed to.
If it's over, what we're allowed, yeah.
So what I'm just asking for the council members to do is put in their planners to really watch their vacation between that timeframe, because we're going to probably have to have a lot of meetings to, to get that done in a condensed period of time. At least, that's my. So, that, that gets linked to me a lot, and that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Bling's not here tonight, Mr. Hodges?
Thanks, ma'am, just a couple of things. You know, looking at the primary elections from just a few weeks ago, if you look at the Rockwall County numbers, they were pretty low, so, you know, I think, I think the overall turnout was 20 or 30%, something like that, it was pretty low. So, you know, I would encourage everybody to get out and vote in the May elections. You know, let that voice be heard. The other thing, you know, everybody's got crumb on us on the brain, and what's true and what's not true, and shaking hands, and wearing masks, and I can't even wear masks in my office right now, because they're such a shortage, they're on backward. So if folks want to get good, reliable information, I would recommend, there's a new video that came out from the CDC, you know, I answered today. So, and I actually linked it to my Facebook page, I don't put that much stuff on there, but if you, if you look at my city Facebook page, I put a link on there for that CDC video. Again, a lot of good information, a lot of accurate information, trying to get through a lot of the other stuff that's out there, so.
All right, Tree. Nothing else? All right, Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, I wanted to hit home again about the Economic Development Committee. So if anybody wants to participate in it, it's highly encouraged that you do. Also, just a reminder, April 1st is also the start of the US Census, those numbers mean a lot to all municipalities.
And that's not a joke, April 1st being equal fools, being serious, that is the actual day.
That is the actual day. Also, Mr. Kohurst, who is, who is in control. Also, Mr. Cohearse, who is, who is in control of hiring for our region in Rockwall County, has left us information here at City Hall. So if you want to participate in the US Census beyond giving out the information that the Census requires for taking that document, and you want to participate, we have some documentation here for you as well.
All right, that's it. It is now eight o'clock and seeing as we've got everything on the agenda, meeting adjourned.